The Columbus City Council meeting for August 18th, 2025 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, a copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Assistant City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Alarcone.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Hemer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Kalinsky.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Who's got stripes and bright stars through the perilous flight? Over ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, see does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. I welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our council meeting anyone in our audience would like to come forth and address any item on our agenda, we'd ask that you please do so. Come to the podium, give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the August 4th, 2025 city council meeting. Item 4B, minutes of the August 5th, 2025 civil service commission meeting certifying police sergeant candidates. Terry Hesacker, Jason Roncheck, Josh Lunger, and additional police sergeant candidate Tanner Dryfirst, excuse me, for potential positions in the future. Item 4C, applicant, application from Butcher Saloon LLC doing business as Glur's Tavern for addition to their liquor license at 2301 11th Street to include the outdoor fenced-in area. Item 4D, resolution number R25-108 approving the agreement with GIS Lab LLC in an amount not to exceed $24,500 for geographical information system support services. Item 4E, resolution number R25-109 approving the agreement with Mark Howater, MD, for reappointment as medical director for Columbus Fire. Item 4H, resolution number R25-110 authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item 4G, finance department reports, and item 4H, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council members, is there anything you'd like removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, remove that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second? We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to update reports from city offices.
Item 9A, update of the Nebraska Department of Transportation 23rd Street Reconstruction Project.
So we're getting down the home stretch. So what they're doing now is they're pouring driveways, sidewalks, returns, things of that nature, a lot of electrical work, street lighting stuff underground and signals and stuff in the area that they're working. They got one major port to go. I think the rain probably set them back a little bit on that, but nothing too serious because they had a lot of it set up pretty well in the preparation of the subgrade. So all in all, they're still, you know, they're still on track to be done and have everything, you know, back open in the first part of September, which again, that the traffic, I mean, all the lanes will be open somewhere around the first part, middle of September, maybe, let's say, but there will be lane closures for this work I mentioned before, plus some landscaping, things of that nature. But, you know, all in all, as you can see, we're getting down to the very end of it, and so that's kind of exciting.
Do you know 26th Avenue when that, or 23rd, when that will open again?
Yeah, I think it's going to be a couple of weeks yet, or probably a few weeks yet. By the time they get all that wrapped up and down there, getting the rain probably held them back a little bit on that, but that was kind of still kind of the end of the goal. They had a, they had a goal of getting it all open and ready to go at the start of the season by first September, and they're still on that.
All right, thanks.
Item 9B, update on the Nebraska Department of Transportation Loop River South Bridges Project.
Yeah, so that project's, I was, is going pretty well. Of course, it's a lot, lot newer. The blast that happened a couple of weeks ago, they've got all that removed now. They're constructing their temporary construction bridge that the contractor uses to construct. They're setting up for the, for another blast coming up here shortly, and so that'll be taking down the rest of it. They'll, they'll take a few months or a little while to get rid of that. They did construct and is, and opening very soon, the underpass, but that opening is not for vehicles, if you recall. That vehicles will not be using that underpass until a point in 2027, but what it does is it allows the trail and that pedestrian movement to go through there. So that's what's going to be a little bit changed, but, but they're gearing up to do that so they can get that blast done, and then they just keep moving forward.
Very good. Any questions? Seeing none, all right. Rick, thank you very much. Brings us up to reports of council committees.
Item 10A, Public Property Safety and Works Committee of August 18th, 2025. Item 10A1, request from Clark Grant on behalf of Ferguson Properties Incorporated to extend the time period for completion of public improvements for Deerfield Park Townhouse Second Subdivision from September 18th, 2025 to September 18th, 2027.
Mr. Mayor, I move this report be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any further discussion?
Yeah, as I've mentioned in the past, I think two years is too long. I think it should be a year to keep them moving on their projects. They can always come back and reapply. It seems like we're getting nothing done but extending projects, and we're not following through. So I'd like to see you guys consider in the future making them a year instead of two years.
The LDO requires two years, or is that?
No, actually, the LDO states it's what the council sets. So they come in with their recommendation and their reasoning for the recommendation on their extended time, which could be months, years, two years, three years, whatever, but it actually reads the council decides on what date to set.
And I didn't see in the, at least the material we had in front of us, what their excuse was, or their reasoning was, I should say.
Yeah, Jamie left, but he did say they wanted to proceed, so I guess you could. They're not here, but it's ultimately up to the council to change it if you would like to.
Any other council comments or concerns?
I drive by that location almost daily. I do know that he is finishing up, he has finished up a townhouse and is just starting a townhouse, or two, a duplex townhouse on the last section of the first subdivision. It would appear to me that he would move on to the second subdivision relatively shortly.
And if I could, what, what, and what Prince Lane's correct in that, you know, the water and the sanitary, or the water and the stormwater that need to be done would need to be done before they could move on much further. It's probably more the paving. I think they want to kind of piece along as they do these duplexes or townhouses, I mean.
I would add, I mean, I understand what Councilman Hemer's asking and saying. I'd add to that. I mean, I hear comments from time to time that we're hard to work with, developers don't like us, and we're tough to get along with, and, you know, I mean, here we are, we're granting an extension, it appears, it's not voted yet, but we're granting an extension. I mean, you know, I think this shows that we're willing to be flexible, that we listen. You know, I think the ones that always say that are the ones that ask for something that's probably unrealistic, and it never, and they don't get it, so they leave mad. Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's a process. Troy's comments are valid if there's a, if there's a point in the future. To me, this is already kind of to where we are now, so, but if there's a point in the future that you want to look at these differently, I think we bring it up when that development's in front of us and, and say, okay, you got a year to do it, or, you know, and, and see where we go from there. All right.
Just to Jamie's defense, I think the Ferguson's do a great job with properties. I mean, it's not like they half-heartedly do it. I think it's a credit to them, and I don't know if that adds to the value of them getting two years or what, but.
Yeah, in no way was I discounting any of their work.
No, but I mean, yeah, just, I just wanted people to understand that he.
I was just kind of thinking that, you know, we've, they have another project on the other side of town that we've extended a couple of times now, and that's, that's why it just seemed like it was history following after it, so.
All right, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A2, request from Columbus Realty Holdings LLC to vacate 10-foot gas easement on Lot 1, Super Saver subdivision. This is on the north side of 23rd Street, west of 33rd Avenue. The committee recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the report be adopted?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A3, Traffic Control Device Committee Report for the second quarter of 2025. The committee recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move this report be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, quote from Rutz Heating and Air Conditioning Incorporated in the amount of $11,577.50 for emergency purchase of a boiler/heat exchanger replacement for the Aquatic Center. This is reallocated from CIP 24-17.
Move the quote be approved?
We have a motion and a second to accept, approve the quote for the emergency purchase, the boiler/heat exchanger replacement for the Aquatic Center. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like a little explanation of what's going on, please.
Yes, when we refilled the pool and started up our heaters, one of the boilers was not working properly, and then we got a part to, to try to fix it because that was the initial diagnosis, and that also did not work. So then the conclusion came to that it is the heat exchanger, and we need to get that replaced.
Thank you.
Not that it matter what temperature do you keep that water?
Roughly 83 degrees, but anywhere between 80 and 85 generally.
Counselman.
Well, so this really wasn't a quote, it was just an emergency repair? We didn't ask for any other quotes from anybody else?
Right.
Okay.
The, the other item I'd like to add, I think this is, it's a, it's a great compliment to our YMCA, is this has been going on, it's delayed our opening of the, the Aquatic Center, and obviously the plunge is closed, and Betsy reached out and talked with Corey at the Y, and he is allowing Aquatic Center members to swim for free during this shutdown.
Nice.
And just asked that they show their aquatic center membership, you know, which is a great compliment to the Y for working with, it's collaborating, it's what we do in our community to, to try to, you know, get over things and, and work things out. So I just think, you know, a shout out to the Y for doing that.
All right, any other, any other comments or questions in this regard? We have a motion and a second to accept. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B, discussion on the draft 2025-2026 budget.
All right, council, again, as I have mentioned before, I just wanted to have an item on the agenda to be able for anyone that might have questions on what we have, have got ready to date, which is not finalized, but if there's any council members that have any questions or thoughts, if there are any, if there's anyone in our audience that would have questions or thoughts regarding our budget, that's the purpose of this. It's just to be able to say, we're here to try to answer a question. Do we have anything to share with this at this point for any of the council members?
This, these draft items attached here haven't changed since before we had the open, budget open house.
Okay, so what do we got?
The draft capital improvement plan, the cost of living, and the personnel sheet.
So we have our capital improvement plan, which is there. We've also got our DCIP plan, which is, which are discretionary items which we've put together, which obviously, again, all these are draft items simply because of not knowing where we will be with valuations and everything. We have, what else do we have?
That's the cost of living adjustment.
Okay, well.
And then the next thing is the personnel changes that you've discussed so far.
Why don't we walk through each one? I mean, that.
I didn't realize that you wanted to do that, but I'd be happy to.
All right.
The number one is the administrative assistant, so that is a position that we previously had, which we're not replacing. So that's a savings of over $100,000. Number two is the Director of General Services, which would be in addition. Number three is Public Property Director, which is a removal. We're reallocating those responsibilities across various departments, mostly park and rec. Number four is a park and rec coordinator to help take over those responsibilities. Five is a, the current communicator, current community coordinator, which we're transitioning to a community building outreach associate, which is a savings of about $20,000. Item seven is project engineer, promotion to assistant city engineer, and then the items eight through 14 are all library-related with a net cost difference of $5,000. The very bottom is wastewater collection, and that's just, I'm moving from a one to a two on the utility maintenance worker position for one position.
Okay.
All of that for a net change to the general fund of less than $50,000.
Yeah, thank you. The, one thing that we look at every year is the, what is the COLA that we're looking at using this year, the cost of living?
Two percent.
Two percent, okay, thank you. Any council members, any questions on discretionary items, capital improvement items, anything that we just said? Anyone in the public here to address any of that? All right. Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry, Counselman.
Under discretionary, we've got the fire engine and the ladder truck, but we're going to fund half of that until next year, correct?
What's allocated in this draft discretionary is that half of each of those apparatus would be this year, and then half would have to be next year as well.
Thank you.
And those are not cheap items.
No, they're not.
And it's a 14-month build.
Yeah.
At the best, at the best?
At the best.
All right, so again, an opportunity to discuss, to, to look at. Seeing nothing more, am I going to beat a dead horse here, so?
I had several questions tonight, went out, and I've got those answered, so I'm good.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Congressman.
I appreciate it. All right, we'll move on then to comment, go ahead.
Item 13C, comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. No discussion may be held on this item.
All right, any council members have any questions this evening? I wanted to make a point of addressing what the YMCA has offered to us on the Aquatic Center, which I had that opportunity, so no, I have nothing, nothing to add, so we'll move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, resolution number R25-111, accepting the deed of dedication for Super Saver Second Subdivision in the north side of 23rd Street, west of 33rd Avenue. The planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R25-111 be adopted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-111. Do we have any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14B, resolution number R25-112, awarding community development block grant funds to Anthony Creshaw for downtown revitalization.
Mr. Mayor, move resolution number R25-112 be adopted?
Second. We have a motion and a second, and a tie for that second, for resolution number R25-112. Any further discussion? Seeing, and I would just mention, we, this is identified as the funds to Anthony Creshaw for those who may not put two and two together, that would be for the Traditions property downtown, as he's getting that ready to reopen. So, all right, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14C, resolution number R25-113, establishing a sister city relationship with the city of Zacapo, Mexico to develop a long-term partnership that promotes cultural understanding, educational opportunity, and mutual enrichment between the citizens of both communities.
Mr. Mayor, move that resolution number R25-113 be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-113. Do we have any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Question, is this the same community that we were able to send the firefighters gear to?
Yes.
It is, excellent.
Yes, what it is, is as the firefighter equipment gets, we're trying to incorporate all of that together. They've been here, that will be there, and this will just be a letter of understanding between the communities.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 14D, resolution number R25-114, approving the sale and transfer of police dog Eros and a body armor vest to the city of Grand Island, Nebraska for the total amount of $6,600.
Mr. Mayor, move that resolution number R25-114 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-114. Any discussion?
Do we have an estimated cost on what it will cost to replace Eros?
Brett, do you want to address that?
Well, I think this number was.
I believe the dog only is around 12.
And this number was kind of arrived at as a depreciated number over Eros's lifetime. And so, I mean, it, it appears to be a fair number, you know, to where we get some value back, something back for what we've invested, but yet they get the opportunity to continue to use the dog as a, as a resource. Any further questions?
If we have a need right now for a dog, do we call the Highway Patrol? Is that what we're doing?
I'm not sure. Brett, do you know if we would have a need for a dog, if you would call the Highway Patrol or, I mean, you know, there's not, there's not a lot of dogs available that would.
There's not.
Yeah, I mean.
There's one in Skyler, which, you know, could be called.
It's a budget item. Yeah.
So type, you know, agreeing with them, probably, I'm not sure, but I'm not aware of the State Patrol dog.
It is a budgeted item that we're looking at replacing, so I mean, you know, there'll be a, a small void here, but, you know, we went for years without one. Many, you know, I mean, so we're, you know, we're, we'll try to fill that void as quickly as possible. Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 14E, resolution number R25-115, authorizing the grant application to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission for Land and Water Conservation grant funding in the amount of $600,000 for the centralized concession stand at Gerard Park.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R25-115. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 25-115. Any discussion?
What's the likelihood of this happening?
Well, it is like any other grant, and, and so we can put in the application and have a very strong case. Typically, when you look at who gets awarded these type of grants, Lincoln and Omaha get a $600,000 almost every year, so I think it's fair for us to also put in for one, so.
For the same type of facilities?
Same type of facilities, yep. Mm-hmm.
Well, I think it's great to apply and see, I mean, you know, if you don't put your hat, hat in the ring, you're not going to have any opportunities, so, you know, if we get fortunate, we get fortunate. If not, keep trying, so. All right. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item 15A, ordinance number 25-13, vacating a 10-foot gas easement located on Lot 1 of the Super Saver subdivision.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rules be suspended and ordinance number 25-13 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 25-13 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number 25-13.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number 25-13 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 25-13. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.